Welcome everyone to tonight's ordinary council meeting. I am the Mayor and I am councillor Georgina Papafoudeou. I declare this meeting open at 7pm. In the unlikely event of an emergency, please follow the direction of council officers and the emergency procedures on the wall near the door. I would like to note that I have given approval for Channel 31 to audio and video record this meeting. Please note that, in compliance and advice from authorities, this meeting has been closed to members of the public and seating in the chamber has been spaced out to comply with the distance requirements advised by the state government. Item one, please stand for the acknowledgement of country. On behalf of Brimbank City Council, I would like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of this land, the Warren-Jerry people, and pay our respects to elders, past, present and emerging. I ask councillors to remain standing for the council commitment, others may be seated. As the council, we will act in the best interests of the Brimbank community and consider the immediate and long-term impacts of our decisions. We will make these decisions fairly and without bias. We will uphold all of our obligations under the laws of Victoria and councils' local laws and will act in accordance with our code of conduct. Item three, closure of council meeting to the public. May I have a mover of a motion to close the ordinary council meeting to public? Councillor Borg?
Madam Mayor, I move the motion as per business papers.
Thank you. May I have a seconda? I will put the motion to a vote, all those in favour, against, carried. Item four, apologies and leave of absence, there are no apologies for tonight's meeting. Item five, disclosure of conflicts of interest, are there any declarations of conflicts of interest? Councillor Farm?
This Madam Mayor, I would like to declare a direct conflict of interest at item 13.6, Planning Scheme Amendment C217. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Farm. Item six, designation of items as confidential, there is one item to be designated as confidential this evening. May I have a mover of a motion to designate these items as confidential? Do I have a seconda? Councillor Trung? I will put the motion to a vote, all those in favour, against, carried. Item seven, confirmation of minutes of previous meetings, may I have a mover for a motion to confirm the minutes of the previous council meeting? Councillor Goodie-Chair, thank you. Do I have a seconda? Councillor Borg? I will put the motion to a vote, all those in favour, against, carried. Item eight, condolences, there are no items of condolence this evening. Item nine, congratulations, there are no items of congratulations this evening. Item 10, public question time, we've now reached the part of the meeting for public questions. Just for anyone unaware, public questions are able to be received in writing by noon on the day of a council meeting. As we have not received any public questions for tonight's meeting, I will move to the next item of business. Item 11, petitions, there are no petitions to be received this evening. Item 12, minutes or reports of special committees, there are no minutes or reports of special committees this evening. Item 13, officer reports, there are 18 officer reports for consideration by council tonight. Councillors, due to time constraints, I will not be granting extensions of speaking times for this meeting. I will review this decision at our next ordinary council meeting. Item 13.1, Brimbank Covid-19 Response and Recovery Strategy Update, April. Dear councillors, as Chair, I would like to introduce this report as our response to Covid-19 is perhaps the most important item our council has had. Tonight council receives for the first time a monthly strategy status report, tracking our operational response to the crisis. Developed in just a few short weeks, the reporting structure and content may change over time as the approach becomes further refined, but what this report does is provide our community with a clear way to track our actions against our strategy, a strategy which has been developed to be agile in the face of a rapidly changing environment. The report publishes the status of our actions against five key pillars. First pillar, health and wellbeing. The second, community support, including financial hardship and resource support mechanisms. Third, economic development and business support. The fourth, economic support, including capital works planning and stimulus. And lastly, our communications, engagement and advocacy response. It is clear that every part of our standard business has had to change, even the way we councillors operate. Community engagement is now through correspondence and Zoom meetings, not the face-to-face and community engagements and events we are used to and are missing so very much. An advocacy which I have made a primary goal of my term as Mayor to fight for better outcomes for our community, the way in which we do that has changed as well. While we can no longer meet face-to-face, I've reached out to all our local MPs, both federal and state, to ensure that they have a copy of our response strategy, understand our work, to share information and to find ways that we all work together. I'm particularly concerned about how Covid-19 impacts upon mental health, domestic violence and upon our young people, particularly those are now being schooled from home. It is a challenging time for parents, carers and educators alike. So, in this changed world, I am pleased to see that as a council and organisation, we are tracking well to provide help where it is immediately needed and to start moving towards putting our community back on their feet. CEO, are there any further comments to add?
Oh, thank you Mayor, just one. I'd just like to reiterate that this is the format for our standing report that we provide every month to the chamber. As the Mayor said, it's an agile document and we anticipate that we will update it as more information becomes available or the findings of some of the research work that we're doing becomes apparent. I'll just mention one last one, which I think is a fairly significant one. Over the last week, myself and the exec team and a number of other staff have been working beaverishly from home, from the kitchen table, to put in a submission to the state government for the Working Victoria Fund. I'm pleased to say that we got the submission in yesterday. What we're seeking is a fully funded opportunity for up to 300 people in our municipality who have lost their jobs due to Covid, to undertake a variety of roles to keep them employed. So, fingers crossed, if we can pull that one off, that will be a significant help for members of our community. Thank you Mayor.
Thank you Helen. So councillors, I commend this report to you. Are there any questions or points of clarification? Do I have a mover for this report? Councillor Tarkos? Do I have a seconda? Councillor Goodie-Chair? Would the mover like to speak to this report?
Thank you Madam Mayor, yes I would. Key to this suite of responses, in my view, is the retention of the home care services, including increasing meals on wheels, being expanded to the most vulnerable people in our community who may be quite isolated during this period. Redeployed staff have been assisting with the food deliveries as well. It would be great if this was expanded to provide maybe outreach across Brimbank for meals or even food hammers similar to what the Tinshey are offering in St Albans, contactless provisions. Another key point is repositioning the community grants programme going forward to assist groups in the context of the Covid-19. I imagine a lot of groups, including clubs, whether it be sports or social, need the support through grants and I already have had groups contact me in Kirol, such as the Kirol Scouts Group, which face extreme hardship, which is a flow-on effect from people out of jobs, unable to pay fees, memberships, which keeps these small but important clubs alive. Probably one of the most important supports is the dedicated business support and assistance page on council's website. Right now businesses are the ones that are really hurting, if they haven't closed their doors already, are in survival mode and need assistance in how to navigate through the various Commonwealth, state initiatives, stimulus packages and income support programmes. Madam Mayor, this is probably, as you said, one of the most important strategies we've ever, this council has had to undertake and consider as we try and ride these uncharted waters. One thing I do know is our small businesses are appreciative of any support we can offer right now in terms of waiving of fees, permits and special rates to get through some tough times. Lastly, a big thank you to all our volunteers on the community register for keeping our isolated people connected and supporting our most vulnerable cohorts is vital. As strong social distancing laws are in place, there are many people in our community who have no one, no family or supports during this very difficult time. A phone call to check that they are okay means a lot, thank you.
Thank you councillor Tarkos. Councillor Goodie-Chair, would you like to speak?
Just briefly Madam Mayor, just to totally agree with councillor Tarkos's comments, but also to say that it's certainly welcome that we will be continuing to forward fund the special rate schemes at the Smallbuns End and also Sunshine. Business areas will be getting the most support from council, they do need their businesses promoted at the moment and they also need to continue their businesses as best as they can at the moment as well. Also welcome the announcement by the local government minister that we can defer our budget, that will certainly give this council time to evaluate how the budget, how the current situation is going to impact our budget. And I do understand that next year's budget will probably be the one that's most impacted, but in the meantime, we still have to think about this year's budget as well. And lastly, to thank everyone for all of this support, I know we've all been supporting each other in this and I think that we'll all continue to support each other in this crisis that we find ourselves in and that everybody stays safe and we will come back into this chamber one day and have our normal council meetings. Thank you very much Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Goodie-Chair. Are there any other speakers? Councillor Hiddich?
Thank you Madam Mayor, I'd like to echo the comments that were made by councillor Tarkos and councillor Goodie-Chair, I support them fully and also your introduction was terrific to hear. From my end, I'd just like to add a couple of other things. One of the key words I heard the CEO talk about was agility and I think in this crisis, and I don't think, I think we all know in this crisis, it's so important that we get the relief out on the decks as quickly as we possibly can. We have an excellent framework, it's been really well crafted by everyone involved and it has a really strong set of deliverables in it. I think what a number of people are asking is when will we be starting up the task forces around getting the business, ideas to support business and community together? When will that happen? How quickly will it happen? What sort of support? What will it look like? And so I would urge that we do that as quickly as we possibly can as a council and as an organisation and I know that that is everyone's goal, but everyone keeps pushing, I think, for that fast implementation. The second thing I would ask is that we have a, when the time comes, councillor Goodie-Chair mentioned the budget and the impact, that we do have a list of the initiatives that will come from the research and the work that's being done, cost it so that we understand the impact on the budget. Saw in the papers during the weekend, Fort Phillips has a $40 million impact, they're estimating. What does the impact here in Brimbank? What does it look like and what are the sorts of initiatives? What do they add up to and, you know, what are we actually going to be doing to manage all of that, deal with the problem, but then sort our budget out and cut the cloth to suit? So I'm looking for all of that as we go on in the next month or two. I have every confidence that we've got the team to do it and the ability to do it, but we do need to engage really strongly with the business and community groups that are around the place who are willing to get in and help us co-design, so I encourage as much of that as we can, as quickly as we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have any other speakers? Okay, thank you. I'll put it to the vote, all those in favour, against, carried. Okay, item 13.2, Planning Activity Update and Delegate Decision, March 2020. May I ask Mr Walsh to present the report?
Thank you Madam Mayor. The purpose of this report is for council to be informed of the status of planning permit applications and trends in planning approvals in Brimbank and also the decisions made under delegated authority during March regarding planning permit applications and other matters. Councils asked to note the current planning application activity and matters considered under delegation.
Thank you. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification? Do I have a mover? Councillor Lancashire?
Through you Madam Mayor, I move the officer's recommendation.
Thank you. Do I have a seconda? Councillor David? Would the mover like to speak?
Yes, thank you Madam Mayor. I note with some keen interest in the stats here that we've gone from March 2019 to March 2020, from $98 million worth of development applications approved to $171 million worth of development applications approved, which is a rather incredible difference. I'm totally surprised at the degree and the nature and the size of this, but this is a great deal of confidence in Brimbank, a great deal of confidence in our economy and very pleasing to see. We're well aware from presentations over the years as councillors that a very big portion of our workforce in Brimbank sits within the construction industry. And in fact, as we understand in terms of moving on from the coronavirus issue to recovering our economy, our biggest opportunity for recovering our economy will be in fact the construction industry. So to see that occurring at this stage is very, very good news, but we certainly have more work to do. We've got a situation where because of the coronavirus, VCAP has been partially shut down, we're doing some work on papers, but otherwise they're shut down, which is delaying decisions. And also, as we will see further in this agenda, there's another item which will impact on these figures in terms of planning scheme amendments, where we can't of course place planning scheme amendments on exhibition in this building. So that again, both of those things will start to have an impact and will need to be addressed. So that may well have a future impact, but at the moment it is gratifying to see that level of work occurring. Thank you Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Lancashire. Councillor David, would you like to speak? Do I have any other speakers? Okay, I'll put it to a vote, those in favour, against, carried. Okay, item 13.3, Planning Compliance Activity Update, from the 1st of January to the 31st of March 2020. Mr Walsh?
Thank you Madam Mayor. The purpose of this report is for council to be informed of the planning compliance activity within the city during the period you mentioned. Councillor asked to note the current activity within Brimbank.
Thank you. Are there any questions or points of clarification? Okay, do I have a mover? Councillor Lancashire?
Through you Madam Mayor, I move the officer's recommendation.
Thank you. Do I have a seconda? Councillor Goodie-Chair? Would the mover like to speak? Would the seconda like to speak? Do I have any other speakers? Okay, I'll put it to a vote, those in favour, against, carried. Item 13.4, Planning Application, P249/2019, for number five, Garfield Street, St Albans. Mr Walsh?
Thank you again Madam Mayor. The purpose of the report is to provide council with an assessment of the planning permit application for the construction of three double-storey dwellings at five Garfield Street in St Albans, against the provisions of the Brimbank Planning Scheme. Officers recommend that council issues a notice of decision to grant a planning permit for the construction of the dwellings at the subject site, subject to a range in conditions that are detailed in attachment five to the report.
Thank you. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification? No, okay. Do I have a mover? Councillor Lancashire?
Through you Madam Mayor, I move the officer's recommendation.
Do I have a seconda? Seconda, councillor Allen? Would the mover like to speak?
Thank you Madam Mayor. This application in Garfield Street, St Albans, it's in what's called a principal, it's in a principal public transport network area, the general residential zone. That makes it appropriate for this type of development. The, in particular, while the three units are two-storey, which is the expected, this particular block is 20 metres wide, which makes it an extremely wide block and gives it an opportunity for a double front or two units at the front and one at the rear. There is strong separation between the units, the two units at the front and strong physical separation and the unit at the rear which provides good articulation, good car parking is provided. In fact, the provisions of the Brimbank Planning Scheme are recorded with this application. In particular with the upper-storey units, there's translucent windows, there's windows to a height of 1.7 metres. All of these things minimise the potential for overlooking. So I think its impact on the adjoining properties has been minimised, there's setback from all the side boundaries and in this case, I think the proposal is reasonably modest given the nature of the zone, which does certainly allow this type of development. So in that regard, I would recommend the officer's recommendation to the council.
Thank you councillor Lancashire. Councillor Allen, would you like to speak to this? Do I have any other speakers? Councillor Borg?
Yes Madam Mayor, I would like to foreshadow an alternative motion.
Okay, thank you. So what happens is if this doesn't go through, I will come back to you.
Wonderful, thank you Madam Mayor.
Would you like to speak to it?
This application is seeking approval for the construction of three double-storey dwellings and each dwelling is to have four bedrooms on mid-block lot. I understand that the application meets all the requirements of the relevant policies and the Brimbank Planning Scheme. Great to see the provision of a ground floor bedroom with full bedroom facilities at the ground level for two of the dwellings, which would create accommodation that would be used for a person of limited mobility. However, such four-bedroom dwellings are likely to attract more residents living in the same dwelling than you would normally expect. This would create a situation where there will be more cars to be parked in an area that clearly has an existing traffic problem and problems with parked cars. Important to note that directly opposite this site, on the corner of Garfield Street and Glaston Street, there is a place of worship and is actively operating. Also, a new place of gathering of people is operating at number 17 Garfield Street. On weekends and sometimes during the week ceremonies are run from these sites. The traffic and parking along both sides of the street has already caused much congestion to the extent that according to residents, traffic control stop are often present. This has created a hazardous situation for local residents to leave and their properties. And as the alternative motion would say, the scale of the proposed development is not keeping with the surrounding streetscape, the front setback of the proposed development...
Sorry? You've got 30 seconds?
Okay, yeah. Oh, the development does not comply with standards, B6 of clause 55 of the Brimbank Planning Scheme and the development will have a significant impact on the amenities, as I already mentioned some of them. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Borg. Do I have any other speakers? Councillor Hiddich?
I would also like to speak against. I hear councillor Lancashire, I hear councillor Borg, my concern is around traffic and parking in particular. There are issues now in the community, we've heard that from the objectors. We have the place of worship nearby and weekend, really big weekend issues with traffic control going into place and we have neighbourhood character issues with setbacks and the double-story at the back of this block is also out of character with the visiting street. So on those grounds, I stand to talk against this particular application, thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Okay, councillor Lancashire, you have a right of reply. Would you like to speak?
No, thank you Madam Mayor.
Okay. Councillors, just an understanding here, if this vote lapses, then we go to the foreshadow motion, all right. Those in favour of this officer's recommendations? Hands up high please, one, two, three, four, five, six. Against? Okay, it's carried. Thank you. Those who voted for, could you please stand? So we've got councillor David, councillor Trung, councillor Lancashire, councillor Allen, councillor Aziz and myself. Those against, please stand up. Councillor Farm, councillor Hiddich, councillor Goodie-Chair, councillor Tarkos and councillor Thank you. Okay, next item, 13.5, Planning Application, P339/2018, for number one, Mermur Avenue, Deer Park. Mr Walsh?
Thank you Madam Mayor. The purpose of this report is to provide council with an assessment of the planning application for the construction of six double-storey dwellings at the address you mentioned, against the provisions of the Brimbank Planning Scheme. Officers recommend that council issues a notice of decision to grant a planning permit for the dwellings, subject to a range of conditions that are detailed in attachment six to this report.
Thank you. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification? No, do I have a mover? Councillor Lancashire?
Madam Mayor, I uh propose an alternate motion. The alternate motion is, uh the council issues a notice of decision to grant a planning permit, P three three nine dash two oh one eight for the construction of six double-story dwellings at one Nemur Street, sorry Avenue, Deer Park, subject to the conditions contained in a fatality, but with the following changes. One, addition of the following conditions after condition one J. The removal of the crossover and driveway servicing unit two and alterations to the layout of unit two. So the garage garage is accessed off the common accessway for other dwellings. The private open space area of unit two must not be reduced as a result of these changes. Sufficient turning areas for access into and out of the garage for unit two must be provided. And uh I uh provision of a visitor parking space at the western end of the common accessway. With the planter boxes on either side of this area replaced by ground-level garden beds with low-level planting inlet.
Thank you, Councillor Lancashire. Do I have a second up? Councillor David? Would the mover of the alternate motion like to speak?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I would. Um this this particular uh application for six units, uh six double-story units is similar in terms of its zoning to the other application. Um which is uh in a area of good um principal public transport network area. Uh and a residential growth zone. Now that makes it an area that's defined as being appropriate for unit development. Um and unit development of a more intensive type of form. Now, this uh application of six units on this block, the the block is bigger than normal size. Uh however, uh I think probably one of the salient points for me is that this is within two hundred metres of a railway station. And uh two things that undermine with that is that it supports urban growth around and urban consolidation around our railway stations, which is something uh uh is supported um by this council and state government. Um secondly, uh this type of development also very much going from one dwelling to six units uh supports supportable housing, which is another particular interest of mine. Uh so both of those things are very important. In terms of the development itself, um it is well articulated. And uh with some separation between some of the units. Uh the buildings themselves are also articulated, making them more interesting. Uh they are limited to two-story. Uh the operations that are proposed in the amendment through uh remove uh the requirement for a second driveway. So we go from two driveways down to one driveway. Uh again, given the frontage, that may not be that critical, but I think that's that is an improvement and will tend to allow probably an additional car space along the road frontage. Uh that means all car spaces will be coming off the central driveway, which again is something I prefer to see. And at the very end of the driveway, there will be a visitor's car space, which was not included um originally in the uh original design. So we get an additional visitor's car space, whereas the unit two that has two car spaces has the same number of bedrooms as other units. Uh giving it two car spaces as against one for the others. I don't see a great deal of advantage in doing that, but having an additional space on the street, an additional visitor's space and all cars coming off a single driveway rather than two driveways are designed improvements that are needed. Uh while I think preferred. The officers have clearly stated that that's doesn't, if those things aren't necessary to achieve reasonable compliance with the planning scheme. Um I understand that. Um uh however, I do think those things might make some improvements. The the design itself, as I said, uh is quite uh well articulated. All the windows at the first floor level, again, uh are translucent or fixed or set at one point seven metres to ensure there is no overlooking of adjoining properties. So privacy of adjoining properties, and if I live next door, it'd be one of my main concerns of privacy maintained. And that is achieved in this particular proposal. Um certainly there are buildings going down the lot. Um but you could do that with a normal house permit and you could certainly go up to two stories with a normal single dwelling. Uh have buildings um going towards the back of the lot. So on that basis, um I would put that to councillors an alternative motion, recommend a piece of order. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Lancashire. Uh Councillor David, would you like to speak?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, indeed. Yeah, what Councillor Lancashire put um together, those additional conditions. Uh I think, I believe rather that they are achievable without creating additional to demand to demand to the um to the neighbours. And it's clearly explained by Councillor Lancashire that it can be achieved without any much way um uh changes to the um to the building. So I support the yeah alternative recommendation, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor David. Do I have any other speakers? Councillor Farm?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I would like to foreshadow the alternate mo- motion um that.
Okay, thank you. Do I have any other speakers? Councillor Hiddich?
I would like to speak against it, Madam Mayor. Um the particular development sits in an area that's close to the railway station and is appropriately zoned. We we all agree with that. Um but to me, uh this six-unit development uh comes up as an overdevelopment. Uh the reason I say that is that the area, despite it being near a small railway station, is one where there is a street that goes off the main station road and into this area. Uh that street is a very, very busy street these days, particularly at peak times. Uh it has enormous amount of traffic and we've seen that before with applications that come into this chamber. Uh that there have been a a series of complications that come from that traffic movement that goes on through that area. Uh we have a, I guess, a a development that has uh six units, but a lot of concrete. Uh we have a a big concrete driveway in the middle of it. We have a an area that does not have much in terms of landscape or uh I guess native vegetation around the area to cool it. Uh we have the potential for a big heat island effect here in this area. And I stand and wish to talk about that again because it's a big issue for this community. Uh we we have to face it. Uh this particular area with the traffic, there are safety issues for people around the area. Uh people who are coming out of that particular development, if it were to get up, would have to face the traffic that comes in peak areas, peak times. There are also kids around the area on bikes and all that sort of thing. Uh we also have a rat run that goes on through the area on a regular basis. So it's a major consideration. Uh Councillor Lancashire has proposed an amendment to take away one driveway and turn it into a single driveway. We know uh around uh different places that gun barrel driveways uh do have, single driveways do have issues, particularly when you have big developments like these, and that that needs to be taken into consideration. So for those reasons, overdevelopment, uh traffic, uh heat island effect and uh.
Councillor, one minute?
Sorry.
One minute?
That's all, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm finished.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Councillor Borg?
I also would like to speak against um this proposed development. Um I want to retire to what Councillor um Hiddich has said with regards to the over-development. Um the concerns about um car parking, especially car parking on the street. Important to note that the site is located in the principal public transport network, which allows a lesser provision of car parking than areas outside the um PPTN. And um and on-site visitor car parking is therefore not required. I understand that one car park, an additional car park visitor space has been allocated, but I believe that this is not enough. Um considering that we still have a culture of high reliance on cars as a means of transport, the likelihood that the prospective residents will be owning a car is very high. And also, in addition, the loss of one additional on-street car space due to the addition of of a second vehicle crossover will further impact uh parking issues in the street. Um in addition, um I am also concerned like Councillor Hiddich with traffic problems. Um a traffic count that took place in two thousand seventeen showed that fifteen thousand cars goes go through each day. I do have a safety concern with regards to to traffic. Therefore, for these reasons, I will not support this report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Borg. Councillor Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um I just want to say, you know, being the way that this is zoned, residential growth zone. It is designed for that very reason, to have a higher density on it. I mean, if we look at residential growth zoning, from memory, there's only about five percent of the whole of Brimbank that is zoned for this type of zoning. So I think that this development, yes, although it's big, but it's not an overdevelopment for what it's designed to do, for what this area is designed for. I mean, you have the train station right there for that very purpose. And I guarantee you, people who want to live close to a, nobody wants to live close to a Huawei line and hearing trains go past unless they're planning on using the Huawei services. Um Councillor Lancashire's alternative motion is better. It already gives you a a visitor car park, which wasn't there originally. Um you know, I'm looking across the road at the other one. You know, it looks very similar, slightly larger, but very similar size, eight units, this one six. So um I think I'll be supporting this one.
Thank you, Councillor Allen. Any other speakers? Okay.
Yes, um with my foreshadowing the alternate motion, I wanna.
Now, this is in response to Councillor Lancashire.
Go um speaking against Councillor Lancashire's alternate motion. As um what I want to say, yes, it's two hundred metre um um away from Deer Park Deer Park Station, but yes, it being used, this street, Nemur, being used at the car park for a lot of commuter that's, you know, going to to work or whatever it is, but use this local resident street to park their car. So with six double-story unit that coming up, you would think that at least twenty, thirty car more to add into the local street. If they, you know, if one day that's commuter or visitor or even resident who would go and live in this um unit would park, pu- put their car on the street. Secondly, yes, residential grows on, that's right. But Deer Park are still very much car-dependent, like Councillor Borg said. When I have a look at the public transport that go to Deer Park, the only one bus route, which is number four two two, that's go from Sunshine to Deer Park into other places. Another one, additional one, which is hardly run, I think it's only run on the weekend, which is route number nine four two, which is a night bus that go through Deer Park. So clearly, the only one train and one bus route go through Deer Park. So there's still a lot of car dependent go through all this street. And you hear from Councillor Hiddich that um this street being used at a red run to bypass and go to Ballat Road. So the the busy business and also the safety of people who live in this street is a concern. I heard from some of the resident that they are so scared to even reverse out the right way because there's so many car park parking across the right way. So um that's pretty much what I want to say, because I think all other people.
Thank you, Councillor Farm. Thank you. Any other speakers? Okay, so now we're voting to the alternate motion, which is the substantive motion. Which is Councillor Lancashire's. All those in favour, hands up high, please. One, two, three, four, five. Those against? One, two, three, four, five, six. Um it's lost. Okay, so we go now to the substantive motion. And if this one is lost, then we go back to the original. Thank you. So, Councillor Farm, would you like to propose your substantive motion?
Yes, um I would like to move my motion as that council issued a refusal of grant, a planning permit, P three three nine over two hundred eighteen for the construction of six double-story dwelling at number one Nemur Avenue Deer Park on the following grounds. Number one, the scale of the proposed development is not in keeping with the surrounding street care and will detrimentally impact on the neighbourhood character. Number two, the front setback of the proposed development to Nemur Avenue does not comply with standard B six of clause fifty-five of Brimbank net Planning Scheme. Number three, the redevelopment will have a significant impact on the man- many of the adjoining properties. Number four, the loss of one additional on-trip car space due to the additional of a second vehicle crossover will further impact parking issue in the street. Number five, there is insuff- insufficient room on street for the provision of canopy tree or equi- landscaping. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a second up? Councillor Hiddich? Okay, uh Councillor Farm, would you like to speak to that?
Um it's um going against the alternate motion, uh sorry.
No, we're talking for your um foreshadow motion.
Even though that the um, there's a lot of condition that um fulfilled the planning um condition that Brimbank required. But on other angle that I look at this application, I think that I'm not in favour of supporting it. So that's why I'm putting up this um motion. Um and whatever I have mentioned before is what I really want to say. Uh add into what I forgot before also, um a drama of a bean day that I think our truck, bean collection truck is already very hard to enter the street with car on both side of the um the road. Um and with that six double-story dwelling, I don't know how many how many spade that our truck have to collect all those bean on the bean day will be a bizarre. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Hidd- Hiddich, would you like to speak?
Yes, I would like to speak for the for the motion that Councillor Farm's put. Uh I think the uh the motion says it all, really. Uh there are a range of uh development issues in this area, given where the site sits. It does sit near a railway station. It uh does sit near a railway station that has a service that uh runs from Deer Park. Uh is no metro service at all. Uh it does have a a location that is near one bus route, but that's it. So there is a heavy reliance on cars. Despite this being a residential growth zone, it is a car city. We have car parking problems in the streets already. Uh we've just lost another one with potentially uh with uh the motion that was lost, there's been a proposal that we lose one. I think the um, so car parking in the street is a real issue. Uh six units, uh we know uh from practice what goes on around this city, that there are a lot of, often a lot of people who live in individual dwellings uh with numbers with different cars and different transport, and they need to go somewhere. Uh we have a real issue with the lack of canopy and inadequate landscaping with this six different units and a big concrete driveway and very little space to put in adequate cover to stop a heat island effect. Uh that is very likely to happen around that area anyhow at the moment because of the lack of cover. Uh we have a a whole range of issues around garbage trucks and getting services into the area now, particularly at certain times of the day. And it's not just garbage, it's it's all the other services as well, depending on what time of day some incident might happen in that area or some collection is needed. Uh we do have issues with neighbourhood character around setbacks, we've said that before. Uh we have a a whole range of issues around. We have a whole range of issues around traffic and safety that are coming up in this area. The rat run is a real rat run, it's a solid one. It happens regularly. Thank you, Madam Mayor. And we have a problem, I think generally with the overall site and the overall overdevelopment despite it being in a residential growth zone. And that's what we're here for councillors, we're here to provide a voice for community, we've heard it from the objectors. We're here to provide assurance to the process and to provide alternative views if we think they need to be put and I support councillor Farm's motion to the call and the different items within it, because I think each of them make common sense and it will be something that benefits the community in the longer term. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Headidge. Do I have any other speakers? Councillor Borg?
Just quickly, Madam Mayor, to say that I also support councillor Farm's alternate motion. There isn't much that I need to go to what has already been said. And I am very much happy to support this alternate motion. Thank you.
Do I have any other speakers? Councillor Lancashire?
Just, Madam Mayor, just some quick comments. As mentioned earlier in my earlier speech, this proposal certainly does reasonably comply with the provisions of the Brimbank Planning Scheme. It is a proposal which, if we do refuse it, there's certainly costs to council in taking it to VCAT. My understanding is that VCAT at the moment is closed, only given the some items on papers. So there'll be further delays and further costs in that regard to the applicant. However, the most important thing is that this is an appropriate development for the zone and for the location. It supports our public transport system, it supports construction jobs, and it shows by approving this that we are open for business and doing our best to support the construction industry, but only where we have development that complies with our plans. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Do I have any other speakers? Councillor Farm, you have a right to reply.
Thank you. I appreciate what has been said. But I also want to respond to the comment that councillor Lancashire was just putting on the table about the cost at VCAT and what we do based on council condition of planning. Yes, we are council and we are community first council. We do follow rule and regulation, but we also hear for people first, you know, aspect that we have promises. Council do provide a lot of services that are lost to us, which you like, you know, for example, performing arts or other services that we don't earn income from. But we provide it for the sake of getting people health, people, you know, lifestyle or improvement, not just, you know, to to build up a business of council, to make it rich or anything. That's what the job of council doing. So in in reply with this, I think we do considering our vote on certain aspect of, you know, planning condition, but the the common sense aspect that people feel and live with for the future, if this development going up, is what we also need to consider as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, councillors, now, just a reminder, we are voting for the motion that's up on the screen at the moment. Okay, so all those in favour of councillor Farm's motion, put your hand up please. One, two, three, four, five, six. Those against? Carried. Thank you. So we've got a division. Those in favour, could you please stand up? Councillor Farm, councillor Trung, councillor Headidge, councillor Goody Chair, councillor Tarkos and councillor Borg. Those against, please stand up. Councillor David, councillor Lancashire, councillor Allen, councillor Aziz and myself. Thank you, everyone. Okay, item number thirteen point six, Brimbank Planning Scheme Amendment C two one seven anomalies. Mr Walsh? Am I incorrect?
I doubt it, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
The purpose of this report is for council to consider endorsing the preparation and exhibition of Brimbank Planning Scheme Amendment C two one seven, which proposes forty-two corrections to mapping and the ordinance within the Brimbank Planning Scheme. Our council regularly updates the planning scheme to correct anomalies and remove redundant provisions. Key changes proposed in the amendment include rezoning land where it is inappropriately zoned or where land parcels are included in more than one zone, a correction to the schedule associated with the heritage overlay, corrections to the table in the schedule associated with gaming to address correct address and correct the addresses and descriptions of shopping centres. It is proposed that Amendment C two one seven be exhibited in accordance with section nineteen of the Act for one month, but council does note or is asked to note the impact of COVID nineteen on the process. And landowners and occupiers and any other persons that may be materially affected by the amendment will be notified and can make submissions to council. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we continue, I believe councillor Farm, you've got a conflict of interest.
Yes, I would like to declare the right red conflict of interest that I have a property in this area. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you councillors. Are there any questions or points of clarification? Councillor Lancashire?
Through you, Madam Mayor, just a quick question about the timing. We've heard about the problem with exhibition of planning scheme amendments. Is there any idea of the government amending the act to overcome that particular problem? Or a timeline, any idea of a timeline amendments would go on exhibition?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The state government has not indicated a workaround or an amendment to the act that would enable us to exhibit. Therefore, the timing for the exhibition of this amendment is unknown, but would be dependent on the state government and the federal government lifting the current social distancing requirements associated with COVID nineteen.
Thank you. Any other questions councillors? Okay, do I have a mover? Councillor Lancashire?
Through you, Madam Mayor, I move the officer's recommendation.
Thank you. Do I have a second, councillor David? Would the mover like to speak?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just some very brief comments. These type of amendments correcting anomalies are something that all councils do. I was a town player in strategic roles in the past, have certainly done this, correcting things. And I think it's a very important part of the due diligence of councils, that they pick up these errors, anomalies and little bits and pieces and progressively correct them in a timely manner. Although I understand, as we've seen, that we're not sure when we'll start this process, it is certainly a good thing to make sure that our planning scheme is correct as possible and this amendment will do that. So I congratulate the officers in this work and support this amendment.
Thank you. Would the second like to speak?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Indeed, I'd like to say thank you to director Walsh and his team for bringing bringing this chip saw for us tonight. In the report it is. Some twenty years ago, I bought this up to council then. They took it on board, but nothing happened. And for that, I thank Calvin tonight. Imagine having a street, Berkshire Road, North Sunshine called West Sunshine. That's what it is, right? The shop says it's called West Sunshine. It's in the report as well. Now, we had even taxi drivers, confusion galore in West Sunshine, everywhere. So I think this is an excellent thing that brought before us tonight. And I fully support what councillor Lancashire says. It's something that is be welcome to everybody concerned. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you councillor David. Do I have any other speakers? Okay, I'll put it to a vote. Those in favour? Against? Carried. Okay, councillor Farm? Okay, item thirteen point seven, Planning Scheme Amendment C two two one, interim specific controls overlay to the Sunshine landfills and surrounds. Mr Walsh?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The purpose of this report for council is to consider providing support to the minister for planning to prepare and approve an amendment to the Brimbank Planning Scheme to apply the specific controls overlay to the former landfills and adjoining land for an interim period of twelve months. Our council has been advised that in December of last year, I exercised delegation to approve, to apply for authorisation from the minister to prepare Amendment C two one two, which proposed the application of an environmental audit overlay to potentially contaminated land at the site known as the former Sunshine landfills and surrounding land. Council officers began preparing this amendment with public consultation proposed to commence in mid-April twenty twenty. The worsening situation associated with COVID nineteen means that council cannot currently comply with requirements under the Planning Act, therefore delaying the public exhibition of Amendment C two one two. This report recommends that council supports an ministerial amendment to introduce this other overlay as an interim measure and advise affected landowners. The purpose of this amendment is to address an outstanding issue that is important, but restricted because of COVID nineteen. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Any questions councillors or points of clarification? Do I have a mover? Councillor Borg? The second? Councillor Lancashire? Councillor Borg, would you like to speak to this?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Considering the current situation with regards to COVID nineteen and council's mandatory requirement of the act in relation to public access to the Amendment C two one two exhibition documentation, it's important for council to postpone this amendment and seek a ministerial amendment to apply the special controls overlay to the land and list it as S C O one in the overlay schedule. This will ensure that members of the community are aware of the potential contamination of the Sunshine landfills and surrounds. Further, if land to be sold, a section thirty-two certificate is required to disclose all current planning controls. It's important that the impacted community is aware of potential potentially contamination of land. This information should be available and transparent to the community. The amendment is proposed to provide this information on an interim basis prior to a formal control being considered. I commend this report to council.
Thank you councillor Borg. Councillor Lancashire, would you like to speak?
Just briefly, Madam Mayor. First of all, I'm aware, we're all aware of the amount of work that's gone into this amendment, and I'd certainly like to support the comments totally of councillor Borg in proposing this motion. We're all aware of the amount of work that the officers have had, officers have had to put into this over a long period of time and to get to this point. And certainly the difficulty in dealing with such an amendment during this difficult time in terms of placing an interim planning control, a special controls overlay in the place for twelve months. That provides, as has been indicated with a section thirty-two certificate, when people buy and sell properties, it will now be referenced in that document. And I think that as councillors, as a planner, that's certainly a very important thing to happen. Councils everywhere, of course, like to move where they find there are contaminated sites, move those sites into an environmental audit overlay, and this is part of that process. So it's very important to do it. This council has, or the council staff have taken on some excellent consultation work related to this. So we really must now, we've done that, we must now start move on the amendment, given that we've done that, been doing that consultation. And I think it's commendable to council that while it's been very difficult for us, it is this council that has taken that cause up to put it into the planning scheme as much as it is difficult to actually get it into the planning scheme and ensure that the right thing of informing the public is done. So I would recommend the officer's recommendation and thank councillor Borg for moving this motion.
Thank you. Do I have any other speakers? Councillor Headidge?
Just very briefly, Madam Mayor, I support councillor Borg's motion and the comments of councillor Lancashire. I just also wanted to add that there has been a significant amount of work going on to get to this point, and the overlay is an important, important step in the process of correcting what has happened in this particular area. I also stand here tonight with a mind for the residents who are impacted. I think the process will be delayed and will be strung out because of COVID nineteen, and that's an issue, I think, for everyone. There is a level of anxiety, no doubt, with many people about all of this. And the fact that we can't do things as quickly as we need to or would like to is a real issue for us, that is a real issue for the people in the area. So I would encourage everyone involved in this process to put as much pressure as possible on the minister and others who might be making the relevant decisions here to get things happening as quickly as possible so that we can talk to the community in a way that gives them a bit more certainty and helps relieve some of the anxiety they will be feeling at the moment. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do I have any other speakers? Okay, I'll put it to a vote. Those in favour? Against? Carried. Item thirteen point eight, submission to the independent review of the Environment Protection and Biodiversity Conservation Act. Mr Walsh, you've been very busy tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The purpose of this report is for council to note that council officers have provided a submission to Professor Graham Samuel, Samuel A.C. on the independent review of the E P B C Act and to consider endorsing the submission and advising Professor Samuel of council's endorsement. Council officers, as I said, prepared the submission and lodged it with the independent reviewer on the twentieth of March of this year. The closing date for submissions was the seventeenth of April, and council is now asked to note and formally endorse the officer's submission. If council endorses the submission, we would then advise Professor Samuel accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillors, any questions or points of clarification? No. Do I have a mover? Councillor Trung? Do you want to move the motion?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I move add a paper.
Thank you. A second, councillor Tarkos? Would the mover like to speak?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. The Environment Protection and Biodiversity Conservation Act, E B B C Act, is intended to protect the biodiversity, the current regulation of the heart failing into interpretation of biodiversity. The current project can be confusing and difficult to understand. To us is required a ten-year independent review, which is now you. The report before us is respond to discussion paper released by the review panel. Current ask, a national environment law, the peril, the federal government department of environment and emitter, the ask is armed to protect biodiversity and all the survey is provided, for example, lean water, lean air and pollination in control any activity that may be impacted, for example, development. The E B B C Act is in fact a Brimbank council is in an area to support protected ecosystem, for example, rest land. land and animal, like the stripper, rigorous lizard. This mean many private and council proposal development need to refer to the federal government for approval. This infect on council by protecting, losing special plan and animal within Brimbank. Development approval, non-approval, at time and the cost for the application. The review of the E B B C Act is timely. It can change thus could be significantly improve the operation and value for the earth. The officer command to be reviewed are intended to help protect the special and threaten the space spicy and ecosystem within Brimbank for our community now and into the future, and to help clarify and streamline the process it prefer when required for development. It's comment on the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Trum. Councillor Tarkos, would you like to speak?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, thank you to Councillor Trum. The E P B C Act is a national environmental law, and it reflects in the role of the Commonwealth to address matters of our national environment and the significance, and provide a more coordinated approach to managing our own environment, and that it, it complies with international standards. So I applaud that there is going to be more uniformly proposed with this submission. The E P B C Act also influences our council's own strategic documents, which includes the Brimbank biodiversity strategy and the Brimbank habitat connectivity plan. Madam Mayor, our municipality supports ecosystems and species that are listed as protected, and as such, some development sites are impacted by the requirements of this act. So this is a timely review, and I fully support the strengthening and the protection of these species and Australia's biodiversity. I commend, I commend the officer's submission. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Tarkos. Do I have any other speakers? Councillor Hiddich?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also would like to echo the comments of people who've spoken before me, councillors who've spoken before me. This particular opportunity is a rare one for us to influence this particular environmental act. It's, I think, an opportunity that's only come up once now in the last ten years. So congratulations to the, to the team who've put together this response in a very short period of time. I take all of the points that have been made before. The things that I would add, that the priorities for change to the Act are three things that I wanted to raise that I think are particularly important for our area. One is that there is an objective to encourage the protection improvement to Australia's biodiversity and for us in our local area, our biodiversity. The second thing I'd like to comment on is the acknowledgement in this review that the influence of climate change on matters isn't, is something that impacts on matters of national environmental significance. And the third thing I'd like to raise is that the, one of the priorities for change that the Commonwealth are looking for feedback on is the provision of appropriate resource locally or regionally based enforcement and approval, and an approval officer to deal with the issues that come up day to day in local areas. How, how important is that to this area? We know from our own experience the impact on the environment of industrial and other contaminatory processes that have gone on before us. It is so important that we do have a strong compliance regime and a strong enforcement regime in the, in the years ahead. So congratulations to the officers again on their response, and I look forward to what comes from this particular process, which is a really exciting one. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Hiddich. Any other speakers? Councillor Farm?
Thank you. Um, I, I accept all what's been said by other councillor, but I think the E P B C Act is quite important. It's in the past that some councillor have been able to go through the grassland tour and finding the important and the beautiful of our own grassland flora and fauna through all the education that's been provided to councillor. I think to protect our own flora and fauna is also protecting our own access. Also a flagship what we have at the local, as our municipality. I'm looking at it as not just the, the nature of the flora fauna that we have, but also would like to expand it into a different field as well. You know, we want to showcase, we want to boost our economy maybe by tourism, by introducing our, you know, showcasing our local access to people around the world or even, you know, Western suburb for, you know, people who want to visit Brimbank and, and get to know what we have here. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Farm. Any other speakers? Okay, I'll put it to a vote. Those in favour? Against, carried. Okay, item thirteen point nine, Sunshine Town Centre Partnership Group, Terms of Reference. Mister Walsh?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The purpose of this report is for council to consider endorsing the revised draft Sunshine Town Centre Partnership Group Terms of Reference, Terms of Reference, which were attached at, at one, forming a selection panel to determine membership and providing a further report to council advising of the membership appointments. The revised Terms of Reference propose an expanded membership of the partnership group, and that its role is focused, would be focused on the delivery of the Sunshine Rising Action Plan twenty nineteen to twenty twenty four. Officers recommend that council endorses the revised draft Terms of Reference, so detachment one, and undertake various actions detailed in the report to give effect to this endorsement.
Thank you. Any questions or points of clarification? Do I have a mover? Councillor Hiddich?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to move an amended motion.
Okay.
As per the screen, we have amendments to point A, that the words three harvest award councillors be included in point one, as per the red section on the screen. In point two, delete three C. Point three, a three D, replace ex officio with as needs, with voting rights, and renumber this to three C. Point four, provision to review the membership every four years. And point five, endorses the amended Sunshine Partnership Group Terms of Reference with the above conclusions.
Thank you. Do I have a seconder for the amendment? Councillor David? Would the mover like to speak?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor, I would. As we all know, the Sunshine Town Centre Partnership Group was established in twenty twelve. The revised Terms of Reference was adopted by council in February twenty fifteen, and the Sunshine Rising Action Plan twenty nineteen to twenty four, to twenty twenty four, year one, identified an action to review the Terms of Reference, which is what we have before us tonight. Our feedback shows the Sunshine Town Centre Partnership Group is not well-known or its role fully understood. There is a shortfall of businesses or private sector representatives in the group, and there is confusion with other groups, e.g. the Schwepfer. And additionally, the agenda is too often focused on council updates. The role and function of the group requires clarity. Membership needs to be built on community and business membership. It may require a change of name and format into the future. The Terms of Reference outline the purpose of the Sunshine Town Centre Partnership Group, which is to maintain a successful partnership and regular dialogue with key stakeholders to improve economic vitality and community life in the Sunshine Town Centre. And to petition the, to position the partnership group as a reference group for any future state government-led governance arrangements that impact on the development of the centre, including the Melbourne Airport railing, the Sunshine Super Hub, the Sunshine Priority Preasing, and the Sunshine National Employment and Innovation Cluster. The partnership group will provide advice, input, and feedback to Brimbank City Council reports to council meetings in addition to holding an advocacy role to promote the development of the centre in line with the espoused vision of the Sunshine Rising Action Plan twenty nineteen to twenty twenty four. In this amended motion, Madam Mayor, it should be noted by councillors that there are currently three ward councillors who attend and participate in the Sunshine Town Centre Partnership Group. One has full membership status, and the other two currently have ex officio status, and we, we believe that that should be amended as per the amended motion to provide everyone with full membership and full voting rights. In practice, all three ward councillors perform the same roles in the partnership group, and the suggested amendment, the suggested amended motion is reflective of current practice. The partnership group has been in place for many years, as we've said earlier, and it's been meeting at best once a quarter and at worst twice a year. There's been a, a heavy concentration of council reports, and we need to turn that around so that we have more external reports and influences coming into the group. There's also an intent to hold more frequent meetings going forward because we understand there will be a lot more important activities going on from time to time. That will create some additional load for the councillors, but we're all up for that. So I think that is the main body of it. The next Terms of References in four years, reviewers in, proposed for four years in this amended motion, we think that there needs to be a, a constant review of the membership to make sure that is reflective of what's happening in the area and what's changing in the area from time to time as key stakeholders come and go. So I commend the, or turn, the amended motion, sorry, to all councillors. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councillor Hiddich. Councillor David, would you like to speak?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. The Sunshine Town Centre Partnership Group, Madam Mayor, was consulted about the review of Terms of Reference at its meetings on the fifth of December last and on the third of March this year. He was proposed the council calls for expression of interest for membership to the partnership group. We noticed this in the local newspaper and the Sunshine Rising Newsletter, newsletter, which would be distributed to business operators and the property owners in the town centre. The group is chaired by the independent member from the professional advisory category, Mister Bob Robb McGoran. And for those that met Robb, they will agree with me that we have the perfect, perfect chair. He's knowledgeable, and his connections are that of excellence. Madam Mayor, in the report before us tonight, as Councillor Hiddich said, is true. We had the one-member council in that group. But often the, my fellow two councillors, they are ten, but used to be an ex officio, uh, uh, official basis. We have before us, Madam Mayor, a huge happening here in Sunshine, the airport railing, and of course, the Sunshine Super Hub. And what Councillor Hiddich put there before us tonight, the, the amendment motion, are fully supported. I believe that my two fellow councillors should be on that, on that group. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have any other speakers for the amended motion? Councillor Farm?
Just a point of clarification. With the provision of review membership every four years, and now there are three, the proposal, proposal of three harvest award councillor be in the group. I'm just wondering with the term that we have, that's how would that apply into four years? That's just.
Good point. So when we talk about a four-year period, we're talking about the term of a councillor period. Is that correct, Councillor Hiddich? Yes. So that means, Councillor Farm, at the moment, if we have elections in October, then the news that a councillor that come in will be in for four years on this committee. Okay?
At the moment, if just for the existing.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay. We're voting for the amended motion. Those in favour? Against, carried. Well done. Okay. Item thirteen point one zero, Councillor Portfolio's Quarterly Report, December two thousand and nineteen to February twenty twenty. And this time, I will ask Mister Hogan to present.
Thank you very much. Must be nice to have a change of scenery. Thank you, Madam Mayor. As inferred by the title, council receives an aggregated report of councillor portfolio activities four times a year. Of note, the report references movement, movement within two portfolios, recognising the election of councillor Papafatia as mayor and the resignation of former councillor Lucinda Congrieve. The appointment of a new councillor to the Healthy Portfolio is to be considered by council within the governance report following in the agenda. I commend this report to council.
Councillors, any questions or points of clarification? I have a question. On, if you refer to page three hundred and ten, where the listed portfolio champions are in the table?
Yes, ma'am.
If you've referred to the Healthy Portfolio, I have continued with that portfolio since I've become mayor. So if that date could be changed from the current date that you've got there to this, from the seventh of November?
From the seventh of November.
Two thousand and nineteen.
We'll be able to make those changes within the minutes.
Thank you. Any other questions or points of clarification? Okay, do I have a mover? Councillor Goodrich? And a seconder? Councillor Farm? Councillor Goodrich, would you like to speak?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. It is a quarterly portfolios report. It is quite a standing report, but it covers the period from December nineteen to February twenty. And despite the summer break, though, ten portfolio meetings were still held, and thirty-two presentations and updates were delivered. Compared to the equivalent reporting period in two thousand and eighteen nineteen, an additional two portfolio meetings were held, and there was an increase of fourteen presentation and updates to portfolios. Content delivered through the portfolios continues to be relevant, timely, and informative, and I would like to acknowledge all the officers who have taken the time to prepare and present to councillors throughout portfolios. I think that the portfolios have come along very, very nicely, Madam Mayor. I think everyone's feeling very, very comfortable. You may, however, feel more comfortable to relinquish your healthy portfolio.
Yes.
And we won't preempt what the next report will say, but anyway. In any event, Madam Mayor, the portfolios will be delivered a little bit differently due to COVID nineteen. So again, the program has been disrupted due to COVID nineteen. However, I'm pleased to report that portfolio meetings recommenced remotely this month using Zoom format. And in fact, I had my first portfolio meeting via Zoom yesterday. So it was very successful, very comfortable sitting in my study, but, and I'm sure the others were as well. But nonetheless, Madam Mayor, the same content will be delivered, same preparation will be made by the officers, and I thank everyone very much for their effort in reassessing and getting used to a new way of doing business. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Goodrich. Councillor Farm, would you like to speak?
Just a few words that I, every time attending the portfolio meeting, I feel very privileged because I can do what I are really interested in, but also getting a full support from officer who working really hard to prepare a lot of report that reported back to me, and also listening to what I really want to see happening in Brimbank as well. So thank you very much to the team and everyone involved.
Very well said, Councillor Farm. Do I have any other speakers? Okay. What's happened? I'll put it to a vote. Those in favour? Against, carried. Thank you. Item thirteen point one one, Governance Report, April twenty twenty. Mister Hogan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The monthly governance report is a standing item within the ordinary council meeting agenda. Written in compliance with the Local Government Act of nineteen eighty-nine, the report variously informs council delegated decisions, outcomes of previous council resolutions, or seeks relevant decision for action. Somewhat a busy report this month responding to both an extraordinary councillor vacancy and the impacts of the coronavirus. There are also a series of recommendations in relation to the adoption of a new councillor code of conduct. If council accepts, each councillor will be required to physically sign the code as witnessed by the C E O at a point later in the agenda as directed by the chair. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Any questions or points of clarification? Okay, councillors, please note that this report recommends an appointment to the Healthy Portfolio as well. All right, do I have a mover? Councillor Goodrich? A seconder? Councillor Borg? Councillor Borg? Councillor Goodiechay?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'll move the recommendation as printed in the business papers, but also with councillors is now being appointed to the healthy portfolio.
Thank you. Okay, back to you councillor Goodiechay, would you like to speak?
Just simply, Madam Mayor, it is a monthly governance report. It is a standing report. Just simply to report that due to the many impacts of COVID nineteen, the way we do conduct our governance is more than ever critical now. Seems like because we don't have council meetings with a gallery, perhaps people out there will think that we're not conducting our governance as the way that we should. I can assure our community that we will continue to govern the way that we are supposed to be doing and according to all rules and regulations. The report provides accountability, ongoing transparency and reassurance again to our community. In fact, every report in the following council meetings will have a reference to COVID nineteen and the implications. This month's important report also includes an MOU with Victoria Universities. It includes information on the new local government act, which will be delivered in four stages. A non-statutory consultation to be extended due to the COVID nineteen restrictions, council code of conduct, community consultation, consultation on this code of conduct, may has closed. No submissions were received and therefore we did not have to have a code of conduct herein. And of course, I do acknowledge councillors is coming on board and becoming the new healthy portfolio champion under your guidance and support also. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Goodiechay. Councillor Borg, would you like to speak?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to comment a little bit about the memorandum of understanding with Victoria University. Great to see this proposed MOU between council and Victoria University coming to council for endorsement. This provides the framework to work together to help improve local employment, education, learning, health, wellbeing and socio-economic opportunities for the Brimbank community. Council and Victoria University already have an existing relationship through the growing Brimbank. This memorandum of understanding will seek to leverage respective learning networks and services along with the record investment to the region, including through the Sunshine Super Hub and Sunshine Priority Precinct to lift collaboration, aspiration and outcomes around economic and social opportunities in new and ways between a council and a higher education institution. This relationship with VU now also needs to be considered through the lens of COVID nineteen in relation to both the higher and vocational education and research. Pleased to say that the federal government has committed to the vocational education sector and as the champion councillor for the people portfolio, I will be very much interested in keeping an eye on this space. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have any other speakers? Councillor Headige?
Just one quick point, Madam Mayor, to add to what's been said before and I support all that's been said before. There is an item of discussion in here about the alternative revenue streams report that council commissioned some time back. And there is a point being made that because of the massive economic shock that we've had through COVID, that this piece of work be put on the back burner for a while because it's highly likely to have negative and immediate, the COVID nineteen shock is highly likely to have negative, immediate and long-term impacts on alternative sources of finance and capital. I hear it, I accept it, the advice that's coming here, but I also think that we do need to be a little bit mindful of what happens in a crisis. Often the traditional ways of doing things do not stand the test of time, that we do need to look for alternatives and we do need to often look for radical solutions. So for me, I think the alternative revenue streams report is a really important one at this time. It potentially offers us an alternative way of thinking about things and bundling things together to potentially seek approvals from federal or state government for schemes that might come along. I think if we apply a bit of innovation thinking, if we apply a bit of creativity and think about different ways we might be able to finance things in the future that don't impact on our balance sheet as much as traditional ways do, then we may have an alternative that suits this council. So I would, would ask that the officers have another look and have another think about it and and potentially consider this as an opportunity rather than a risk. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have any other speakers? Councillors, I'll put it to a vote. Those in favour, against, carried. Councillors, before we go ahead to the next item, I would also like to say a few words in relations to the delegates report for the municipal emergency management planning committee, considering I have been a committee member since November two thousand and sixteen. I would like to highlight the tireless work the municipal emergency management planning committee member organisations continue to do during this unprecedented coronavirus pandemic. The committee held a special COVID nineteen virtual online meeting last Friday morning, which councillor Goodiechay also participated. This special meeting was organised for agency representatives to update their agency's status during this COVID nineteen situation. The committee was updated on council's adoption of the Brimbank COVID nineteen response and recovery strategy at the special meeting of council on Monday, the sixth of April and the early establishment of a COVID nineteen crisis management team and associated COVID nineteen coordination group and subcommittees. In addition, it was highlighted that council continues to deliver essential services, including waste collection services, meals delivery, personal care, roads and cleansing services and parks maintenance to meet our community needs. It was also highlighted that although council facilities are closed, alternative service delivery models have been implemented, such as the introduction of the already very popular library at home delivery service. Council also continues to have increased community campaigns online, including dedicated COVID nineteen information. Verbal COVID nineteen response activity reports were provided by the following agencies. The Department of Health and Human Services, Victoria Police, Red Cross, the Salvation Army, the State Emergency Services, the Metropolitan Fire Brigade, the Victorian Council of Churches, the Salvation Army, Centrelink, St John's Ambulance and also Victoria University. I would like to also highlight a special comment made from the Victoria Police acknowledging the great work undertaken by Brimbank Council and the other councils in the North West Region in supporting other emergency management agencies and the community. I commend the ongoing tireless efforts of the committee member agencies, our CEO, the directors and staff in supporting the Brimbank community. Thank you. Okay, next item, thirteen point one two, advocacy report, October two thousand and nineteen to April twenty twenty. Mr Hogan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This report provides an update on council's advocacy and key stakeholder engagement work as it continues to advance the priorities set out in the transforming Brimbank twenty twenty agenda and most recently responding to emerging community needs as a consequence of the COVID nineteen pandemic.
Thank you. Councillors, any questions or points of clarification? Do I have a mover?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move the report as per papers. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Tarkos. A seconder? Councillor Farm, thank you. Councillor Tarkos, would you like to speak?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In speaking to the advocacy update report, I would like to note that most of this work occurred prior to the COVID nineteen pandemic. In doing so, I acknowledge the refocusing of our advocacy resources that have supported the development of council's COVID nineteen response and recovery strategy, which includes relevant advocacy priorities included as part of the broader stimulus response. The October two thousand and nineteen to April twenty twenty advocacy and engagement report provides council and our community with an update on the achievements, opportunities and challenges that confront us with the transforming Brimbank twenty twenty agenda over this period. Launched on the thirty-first of October two thousand and nineteen at State Parliament, the transforming Brimbank agenda sets the council's advocacy and engagement priorities around jobs, education, health and environment. This is an agenda that has partnerships at its core and provides a positive pathway for the federal government, state government and non-government sectors to work with council on a number of economic and social initiatives. As has been previously reported in this chamber, I'm delighted to advise that council's Save Upper Stony Creek campaign, as outlined in our environmental equity agenda, resulted in both the federal and the state government in October nineteen, November nineteen of two thousand and nineteen respectively recommending the recommitting to this project. A combination of strong community campaign as well as direct positive engagement with key federal, state and government decision makers as well as local parliamentarians provided this outcome for our community. Council's advocacy visit to Canberra on October two thousand and nineteen also saw us secure keynote meetings with senior government and non-government parliamentarians to advance our transforming agenda priorities, namely around the opportunities associated with the Sunshine Super Hub and the Sunshine Priority Precinct. And we thank the local member Daniel Malino, local federal member Daniel Malino for facilitating the visit. Council received a briefing in Canberra from Air Services Australia on Melbourne Airport and the processes associated with how council can engage in a new runway proposal. In November, Mayor Papafolio launched the Brimbanked Regional Employment Trial, which saw council successfully secure two hundred thousand dollars in federal government funding to help connect local disadvantaged young people with local businesses and local jobs. In November, council welcomed the state parliamentarians Legal and Social Issues Committee chaired by Natalie Solomon MP to Sunshine where they held hearings on the inquiry into early childhood and call to communities and where Mayor Papafolio and councillor Borg presented on our behalf. In December, council again wrote to the state minister Jacinta Allen and federal minister Alan Tudge around the need for a fast, efficient, dedicated Melbourne airport rail link via Sunshine that will maximise economic and social outcomes for our community. In February twenty twenty, council formally submitted its latest round of applications for local sporting grants to the state government, including a two million dollar fund, funding request for the St Albans Health and Wellbeing Hub. This was supported by the council and life-saving Victoria announcement of an MOU which will see St Albans become the new region wide, region-wide safety, water safety initiative for culturally and linguistically diverse communities. In February, Brimbank and Melton councils wrote to the minister Jacinta Allen expressing concern that contaminated soil from the Westgate Tunnel project may be sent to Raven Hall. And in March, Mayor Papafolio advocated directly via meeting with Melton to Minister Allen's office and Westgate Tunnel Authority on this very concerning issue. The former Sunshine Landfills issue, as was brought up earlier in this meeting, also seen council engage with residents and state government over a number of months, including through council's recent calls for the establishment of a land contamination task force for Melbourne's West. In regard, in this regard, I acknowledge the announcement that the EPA will also be setting up an office here in Sunshine. Something that we as a council have been calling for some time.
Councillor Tarkos, you've got thirty seconds.
Thank you. I may need a little bit of an extension if that's nearly finished. Okay, calling on some time and which we hope the first of many more steps will take to deliver us the environmental equity agenda. On this note, I acknowledge and congratulate Mayor Papafolio for coming, the Mayor of the West, on the city deal governance structure. Another example of Brimbank helping lead local regional advocacy, as well as my own appointment as metro member on the executive of Algarve. Madam Mayor, whilst we cannot meet MPs face to face, we will continue our strong advocacy via online Zoom and other means to continue our strong advocacy for our community. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Tarkos. I gave you those extra few seconds. Okay, councillor Farm, would you like to speak?
I think I can't have enough say, you know, adding to councillor Tarkos that was saying, but what I would like to say is for councillor who are and have been in the advocacy portfolio that you have been representing us in advocating for all the real needs for Brimbank. And that, you know, cannot count your, enough of your hard work as well. So thank you.
Thank you for your calm words councillor Farm. Do I have any other speakers? Councillor Headige?
Just briefly, Madam Mayor, I'd also like to congratulate everyone involved, yourself councillor Tarkos and the officers for all the work that's gone on. There's a lot of work when you read it all there in one place. It's an enormous amount of effort. One thing I would like to say though is that COVID nineteen does give us an opportunity to look at advocacy and, and again say, how important is it? And how important will it be in the twelve months ahead and the two years ahead? Particularly for this community where there will be a significant impact in terms of employment and various other fallouts from the COVID nineteen crisis. I guess for me, it means that we also need to look at what our priorities are in that current advocacy strategy. Things will change and we need to change with them. So we needed to think about that refresh. But one thing that struck me over the past week or so, I read an article in the paper about Toby West from the city of Melbourne, the resilience officer there and the importance of the resilience work that's gone on in Melbourne for the last four or five years. And the work that's gone on this council, we had done, you remember back when we started a conversation about resilience, the team came here and worked with us. And we developed a resilient strategy which has been in place since two thousand and eighteen and is now in its last year. For me, I think this particular strategy, now that we have COVID nineteen upon us, needs to be pulled out and reviewed as part of our response and recovery strategy. That we do need to look at it with the hindsight of three years' experience and look forward and say, well, okay, where is our community at? What are the things that are going to impact it for the next few years? What do we need to do about strengthening our community and building long-term resilience? We know unemployment, education, all the usual things are there for this community in terms of strengthening, but we do have a strong community overall. We've seen it again in this crisis, come together, the community groups and so on to support the most vulnerable. But let's think about resilience going forward because by croaking, a whole lot of people in this community will need support in an ongoing way and the resilience strategy is where we start that effort. So for me, we have a great advocacy program. It's built up over the years. It's been progressively improved. It is growing all the time, but now more than ever, we need a really good, strong advocacy approach going forward. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Headige. Any other speakers? I'll put it to a vote. Those in favour, against, carried. Thank you. And could I also say a special thank you to Dan Hogan and Anthony for all their hard work as well. Thank you. Okay, report thirteen point one three, delegations review, April twenty twenty. Mr Hogan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The report before council is operational in its intent as delegations allow a council to convey its legal powers such that council officers may lawfully conduct the business of council. Council officers have reviewed the current delegations in line with best practice guidelines and provide now the following delegations for the consideration of council. I'd like to bring it to the attention that the report also recommends the addition of a sunset clause to the emergency addendum to the S five instrument of delegation from council to the CEO. This will mean that the special delegations to the CEO to cope with governance risks associated with COVID nineteen will be automatically revoked upon the state government taking steps to manage those same risks through legislation. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillors, any questions or points of clarification? Okay, could I please have a mover? Councillor Goodiechay? And a seconder councillor Headige? Councillor Goodiechay? And a seconda, councillor Headige. Councillor Goodie Chair, would you like to speak?
Just briefly, madam mayor, I think Mister Hogan explained everything that's in there and if we read through the report. It's quite self explanatory, so I commend this report to council. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Headige, would you like to speak? Do I have any other speakers? I'll put it to a vote. Those in favour, against, carried. Uh thirteen point one five, final draft. Sorry, thirteen point one four. Sorry about that. Um approval of borrowings. Uh Mister Ma, could you please present this report?
Thank you, madam mayor. Um this report is for council consider authorising both the CEO and the mayor to sign loan documentation. On behalf of council so that we can take up thirty three point four nine million dollars worth of loans. Which were approved in the two thousand and nineteen twenty budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or points of clarification? Do I have a mover? Councillor Goodie Chair, do I have a seconda? Councillor Headige. Councillor uh Goodie Chair, would you like to speak?
Uh just a few points, madam mayor. It does come under my portfolio as well, but um. Since it's got to do with money, it comes under everyone's portfolio. So, in the nineteen twenty annual budget, council did make a provision to borrow thirty three point four nine million. To refinance an interest only local government funding vehicle loan and to fund capital works projects being carried out during the financial year. So these borrowings, madam mayor, together with other factors such as operating surplus and government grants. Fund capital of the council's capital works programme. It is important that health and council maintains a healthy level of capital works expenditure. To ensure maintenance of existing infrastructure and building of new infrastructure to meet changing needs of the community. Six scenarios of the loan structures have been provided in attachment one and I'm sure that the councillors have um already scrutinised it very well. Uh and the recommendation is scenario three is the preferred option. And this option is a ten year principal and interest loan. It is in line with council's annual budget and long term financial plan. And by entering into this loan agreement, locking in a fixed interest rate for the next ten years. Council will be protected from any future interest rate increases. So scenario three also does present the lowest financing cost. So I commend this report to council. It is important that we continue with our financial plan. Um having said that, even though we are approving this loan, I know that it will be probably implications when we do decide. To discuss our budget later on and I'm sure that the council report will be coming in later on. But in the meantime, we do have to approve this loan. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Goodie Chair. Councillor Headige, would you like to speak?
Just briefly again, madam mayor, I commend the report to councillors. I think the Reserve Bank Governor said it all the other night, that this is the uh ideal time to be borrowing with interest rates as they are. Um this particular borrowings uh approval has been sought, twenty two million dollars of existing loans being refinanced, being rolled. And refinanced, uh a good decision given, given the interest rates at the moment and the balance being used to cover. Uh costs incurred in the current financial year's capital works budget, I commend to council.
Thank you councillor Headige. Do I have any other speakers? Okay, we'll put it to a vote. Those in favour, against, carried. Okay, thirteen point one five, final draft indoor sports facilities feasibility study twenty twenty. Uh Ms Dumble, could you please present this report?
Thank you, madam mayor. Uh the drafts um indoor sports facility feasibility study is presented tonight to council. To consider for adoption following a period of community consultation. Which opened on the twenty second of November in two thousand and nineteen and closed in January this year. Uh the draft study has had some minor changes based on community feedback.
Thank you. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification? No? Alright, do I have a mover? Councillor Aziz, thank you. The seconda, councillor Borg. Sorry, councillor Aziz, would you like to move the motion or read the motion? Or note it?
Thank you, madam mayor, for giving me this opportunity to speak for you as a former profile champion of health. Um the development of the indoor sport facility feasibility study is key recommendation. Can you hear me? Um. In Sports Facility Development Plan two thousand and eighteen. This determines the need for additional indoor facilities to cater for existing and future demand. The draft study was informed by input by key stakeholders, including councillors, indoor sport facility managers. Brimbank schools, indoor sports clubs, neighbouring municipalities and state sporting associations. Statish- statistic recommendations in the draft study are provided in line with the sports facility development plan being. Optimize the use of existing sports facilities in Brimbank, develop additional facilities to existing sports sites in Brimbank. Develop new facilities and develop partnership agreements with neighbouring municipalities and local organisations. There are nine statistic strategic actions under the recommendation of implementment. Across short, medium and long term timeframes. The draft study was approved for community consultation at at the nineteenth November Ordinary Council Meeting. A period of consultation was undertaken from the twenty second of November two thousand and nineteen to the seventeenth of January twenty twenty. Council received nine written submissions which provided overall support. Uh for the study. Minor changes were made to the draft study based on the feedback received. The final draft indoor sports facility feasibility study provides the evidence and statistic. Directions for council on future planning and provisions for indoor sports facilities. I commend this report to council. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Aziz. Councillor Borg, would you like to speak?
Thank you, madam mayor. Um this is a fantastic piece of work that is highly needed. It provides evidence and and strategic directions for council on how best to manage the identified gaps. We are very familiar with the disturbing statistics when it comes to health related matters in Brimbank. And issues that relate to youth, especially especially youth disengagement. Sports facilities are more than just a place to play sport. They provide a space for people of different walks of life to connect. And they are and they even provide a platform to ho- to hook on to other areas such as education. And human services, both for the participants as well as family members that accompany young children. It's important to note that the study includes also an indoor court feasibility study. Future needs for additional future courts, especially in the south of the municipality. Where there are less courts, where there is a future population growth. Importance of raising awareness of the findings of this study and the need of support. Both at slay- at state and federal government levels. As well as the need to investigate land land purchase opportunities, I strongly commend this report to council.
Thank you councillor Borg. Do I have any other speakers? Councillor Goodie Chair.
Uh just quickly, madam mayor, I do welcome this report, uh the indoor sports facility study. Um it will be in added addition to our um uh sports facility study that we already have. And together these two documents, of course, will inform council into making better informed decisions on our sporting facilities into the future. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Headige.
Just briefly again, madam mayor, I think the other important thing that needs to be identified is the uh. The importance of school partnerships that you're being championing. Uh there is such a shortage of space, indoor spaces around the city. Uh it has held back sports development in these particular settings for quite some time. And it it appears from the report that it will be still quite some time. Before we do get some alternative facilities in place other than the Keelaw Stadium. Um I guess that really does reinforce the importance of getting out and talking to the Department of Education and the schools about potential use of. Shared use of some of their facilities and the sorts of deals that council might be able to do. Uh I note that in West Sunshine, there is a particular opportunity. Uh look forward to hearing some more about that as that piece of work advances and that council gets into. Uh discussions with the education department around what can be done in this particular area to improve outcomes for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have any other speakers? Put it to a vote. Those in favour, against, carried. Thank you. Um item number thirteen point one six, draft strategic framework for library collections. Uh Ms Dumble.
Thank you, madam mayor. The draft strategic framework for library collections two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty five. Is presented to council to consider endorsing for a four week period of community consultation. During this period, the community will have access to the draft framework on the council website and Brimbank library uh website as well. The draft framework builds on the current strategic framework for library collections. It defines the purpose, vision, guiding principles and the strategies. That will help shape the library con- content to the year two thousand and twenty five.
Thank you. Any questions or points of clarification, councillors? Okay, do I have a mover? Councillor Borg?
I'll move the spare business papers. Thank you.
Thank you. Seconda, councillor Tarkos. Councillor Borg, would you like to speak to the?
Yes, thank you, madam mayor. In the difficult times we are facing with the Covid nineteen pandemic. Now more than ever, our libraries play a critical role in serving and supporting our community. Library service services have quickly responded to business not being as usual. And they have been innovative and flexible in their services such as home delivery and online story time. The draft framework for library collections has been developed to respond to the community's needs and interests. Foster the love of reading and learning and guides council's in- investment in library connections. This framework builds on the library's first strategic framework for library collections two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and twenty. The collection comprises of print materials, multimedia and electronic resources for reading, listening to. And viewing. Approximately one fifth of the collection comprises of digital content. This is a key element of the library correction collection. It enhances rather than replaces traditional physical. Collections. During social distancing while the library buildings have been closed. The di- the digital content has proven its value and importance. It is vital to keep engaging people of all ages with reading through collections, activities and programs. This framework provides the direction to ensure collections reflect, recognise, respect. And value Brimbank's residents, workers, visitors and cultures. I commend this report to council.
Thank you. Councillor Tarkos, would you like to speak?
I would also like to reiterate what councillor Borg said. Um at the moment, we've uh five of our libraries currently clo- uh closed. I would like to strongly congratulate our library uh department for its dynamism. Uh for turning a very difficult situation that we face into an opportunity. And um highly commend the online library uh delivery service. That is now reaching out to our community in innovative ways of delivering books to people. Uh to for them to continue their interest in um where uh digital and other forms of um reading. Which is 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 really critical at this time. So repurposing um our excellent libraries, which are. Um as we all know, award winning, to provide this service should be looked at at by other departments in how they deliver. Uh they can also uh frame this di- difficult situation into a positive. Um al- also, uh like uh as councillor Borg said, um the promotion of digital um library items. As being the big mover for a lot of our our community. I look forward to the community consultation consultation and feedback. For this draft framework and in the next four weeks and highly commend the report. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have any other speakers? Councillor Goodie Chair?
Uh just quickly, madam mayor, I did mention before that um as part of my portfolio reading yesterday, we talked about the delivery of the library service. And I understand that in just two weeks, there are about a thousand people who have signed on to the delivery of library service. So. It's an amazing thing that this council has done to turn around this service. Uh very, very well done. Um well done to the staff and the volunteers. There are twenty seven volunteers from our library staff who have actually signed on to deliver books. They can keep the books as long as they want, but the the most important thing I think also coming out of this is because this is going to be a consultation on our library. Um collection, um the important information that they can collect from the current clients that they are delivering to. About either delivery service or the collection of the books, the type of books that they require. All of that information can then be also gathered from these people and they are quickly, quickly signing on even more. So congratulations to everyone and I look forward to hearing the the responses from the public on this collection. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have any other speakers? Okay, I'll put it to a vote. Those in favour, against, carried. And could I just add as well, it's an excellent um program and learning tool for our community. So well done. Thank you. Uh thirteen point one seven, J R Parsons Sports Club's transition plan. Uh Ms Dumble, thank you.
Thank you. This repres- uh report is presented to council to note the agreed operational. Future transition arrangements for the Grand United Cricket Club and the Albion Football Club. With the planned capital up- upgrades at the J R Parsons Reserve. The agreed transition plan is expected to achieve the goal of multi-purpose community facilities. As outlined in the development plan and the community um services infrastructure plan. While also recognizing the contributions of the Albion Football Club to its current facility.
Thank you. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification? Do I have a mover? Councillor David? A seconda, councillor Headige? Councillor David, would you like to speak?
Officer's recommendation, madam mayor.
I. I'll move. Sorry, um councillor Headige? Sorry, councillor.
You asked me to speak or?
Yes, would you like to speak?
Yes, madam mayor, I will, yes. Um look, just to say that um I I was always, it was always my understanding that. Helping out in football clubs, um. Always wanted to stay in their old building. It's my, it was a must for them. This year was just sentimental to them, but very beginning it still is. And as. The office just said earlier, um they did contribute to that building earlier in life on construction. And to them, it was like their own, they owned the building. However, when I read the report and it was mentioning about. If they tend to take on that building, the old building, stay in the old building, they have to have the responsibilities in reference to maintenance. And all the other costs that happens to them thereafter. And I was a bit hesitant around the club myself just to make sure. And they confirmed with me that they're willing to do so. So that's a win win situation in reference to that. Uh as to the Grand United and of course the tennis club there now, uh is no problem with them to say, yes, we are, we do. They like to enter into the new, get into the new pavilions as soon as possible. So, look, I. I am supporting the recommendation by the the officers. And we're looking forward to assist them in the in the futuristic type of times in sport.
Thank you councillor David. Councillor Headige?
Thank you, madam mayor. I'd also like to commend the officers for the report and the work that's gone on so far. Uh we approved the master plan not too long ago and this is the next piece of work that follows on from that. Uh as we know, J R Parsons Reserve sits there in in Albion with the iconic Sunshine Salo sitting there. We all saw the projections night there not too long ago and what a fabulous night it was, but what a great sight it is and. How much better can it be when this master plan gets implemented with all the pieces of work we go with community, with the football club, the cricket club and the tennis club. Uh it will be some place eventually when that piece of work is finished. Uh in preparing myself for this particular item, I ran into the secretary of the cricket club at Marketplace. In preparing myself for this particular item, I ran into the Secretary of the Cricket Club at Marketplace on Saturday and he was telling me that they're more than happy to proceed into this transition plan. I got in contact with the football club and whilst they have some reservations about all of this, they are, I guess, concerned that they do stay in their existing rooms and give it a try for now, but they also get involved in the planning and the development of this new facility. And they see opportunities for their women's teams to eventually move into this new facility as a starting point potentially. And moving along alongside the cricket when the new facility is finally planned, developed and built, however many years that might be. So in the end, the football club, despite some of their reservations are quite willing to get involved in the transition planning and the working group that's going to be established, the working group comprising football, cricket and tennis. And the tennis club is also appear to be involved in the working group. So it's good to see that finally we're starting to see some movement at the J R Parsons Reserve in terms of where we head with this particular master plan and the gradual implementation of it. It's good to see some discussions going on between various clubs, particularly the football and cricket club where there's been a long history of issues and some conversations starting to happen to try and draw some of that together. There will be issues going forward in this process, make no bones about it. But I think the willingness and goodwill, there's an element of there enough to really get stuck in with the transition plan and to do the pieces of work that the officers are suggesting. So I commend the motion to councillors.
Thank you. Do I have any other speakers? I'll put it to a vote. Those in favour, against, carried. Okay, item thirteen point one eight, contract numbers one seven forward slash two three three eight, provision of footpath grinding, football. We're talking about sport. Okay. Provision of footpath grinding and patching, tactile maintenance and miscellaneous footpath maintenance works extension of contract. Mr Whiteside, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And look, this is a report for council to consider the extension of the contract. I won't go into the title, as you already have, for a one year period. The contract forms part of our operational program for footpath and curb maintenance works, which is approved as part of council's annual budget. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions or points of clarification? Do I have a mover? Councillor Lancashire? Thank you. Councillor Goodrich? Okay, would the mover like to speak?
Briefly, Madam Mayor, just a very brief note, this certainly is, extension of this contract is quite valuable. The work we do here is very critical and very much does save the issue and the access issue. So well done to the office. Thank you.
Thank you. Would the seconder like to speak? Any other speakers? I'll put it to a vote. Those in favour, against, carried. Okay, item fourteen, notices of motion. There is one notice of motion this evening and it's as printed on the screen, I believe. Okay, councillors, I lodged this notice of motion, but I have decided to withdraw it. This is because it has been superseded by the sector wide advocacy of the M A V who are calling for an extension period of twelve months. I therefore will not move it. If no one else wishes to move this motion, it will lapse and we can move on to the next item of business. Does anyone else wish to move this notice of motion fourteen point one? No? Okay, thank you. Okay, item fifteen, notices of motion, rescission? There are no rescission motions. Item sixteen, urgent business. CEO, is there any urgent business?
Interestingly, Mayor, there is this, an item of urgent business this evening. So councillors, I'll just give you a bit of information before you vote to decide whether you'll accept this as an urgent business item. But several weeks ago, equipment on the Barrow site in McIntyre Road, Kialba, was vandalized. What does that mean? Is there has been no ability to undertake any air quality monitoring for the last three weeks and at this stage into the foreseeable future? The reason that I'm requesting that this be brought into the chamber as an urgent business item is so that we can write to the appropriate authorities to ensure that it is restored as soon as possible. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification? No. Okay, is there a mover of a substantive motion in relation to this item?
Madam Mayor, I would like to move a motion. Thank you.
Could you please state this motion?
Madam Mayor, that council writes to the CEO of the Barrow Group seeking an assurance that sourcing the specialist equipment remains a priority and that the community engagement strategy is made public upon finalisation. And that provides copies of this correspondence to the relevant minister and local member and the CEO of the EPA. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a seconder? Councillor Allen? Okay, would the mover like to speak?
Briefly, Madam Mayor, I express my appreciation to the council for accepting this urgent matter that necessitates our council is given urgent assurances from the Barrow Group that air monitoring of the Kialba landfill site, which has had hotspots burning for over eight months, resumes as a matter of priority, particularly in light of the COVID nineteen restrictions and the implications of movement of residents being only of necessary essential movements. Therefore, they are put in a more vulnerable position of exposure. And with no active air monitoring, understandably, our community is extremely concerned and has a right to know that the air that they breathe and their children breathe are free of toxic pollutants and contaminants that may harm their health. Madam Mayor, we ask for transparent reporting and we also ask for a community engagement strategy that is enacted as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Allen?
Just to say, Madam Mayor, that I commend the work that's gone in. I know the calls that I've received, people are nervous, residents are nervous. And it makes them, gives even more concern when we've got this monitoring that's been knocked out and it just creates this air of uncertainty and it just, it doesn't bode well. So yeah, I look forward to this being remedied as soon as possible.
Thank you. Do I have any other speakers? Councillor Hiddich?
I just wanted to say in support of the motion and congratulate councillor Tarkos for bringing it forward. This issue has burned on for a long period of time and it is wearing everyone out. I know that I like councillor Allen and councillor Tarkos and many others, I'm sure. I get calls about this regularly. People in North Sunshine are being affected when the wind blows that way, people in Kialba and Kiola and so on and the areas around are all being affected. People are staying at home, people don't know what they're smelling, they know that it's not good from the smell and they are very suspicious of what's going on. I think the loss of equipment, loss of monitoring equipment is a really significant issue, particularly because it's been going on for quite some time now, the, I guess, the pollution of the area by the tid fire without any monitoring equipment and the community rightly is putting its hand up and saying enough's enough. And I support them to the max. I think if I was living there close by and was smelling that on a regular basis, it would be something else. And health and wellbeing is priority, as we're seeing with the COVID exercise at the moment. It should be a priority for Barrow to really get stuck in and source something as quickly as possible and to inform the community of that and the piece of work they're going to do to commission it and get it ready in a timely way. So I support councillor Tarkos's motion and I ask that the Barrow Group do really get serious and double their efforts to source some appropriate equipments and specialist equipment and get it in place as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have any other speakers? Okay, I'll put it to a vote. Those in favour, against, carried. Councillor Tarkos, thank you for bringing this to our attention. Item seventeen, confidential business. There is no confidential business. Councillors, we now have the signing of our new code of conduct. Councillors, as we have now adopted the new code of conduct, we are required to sign it in front of the CEO. I will now call on each councillor to come forward in turn and sign the new councillor code of conduct and then return to their seat after signing. I'll also call on the CEO to witness each councillor signing the code. So. Thank you to all for attending and for your interest in tonight's meeting. I declare this meeting closed at nine twenty five P M. Thank you.